Voters in the Mill River Unified Union School District are hereby warranted to be at the Mill River Union High School Library on February 22, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. for the annual school district meeting to transact the following business. Article one, to elect the following officers, A moderator, B clerk, and C treasurer. I will now be taking nominations for the position of moderator. Gail.
Gail Fowler, I nominate Eldred French. The second.
Any other nominations? Eldred French has been nominated in second. I ask the clerk to cast one ballot and make that official, so we don't need that vote. Clerk. I'm now accepting nominations for clerks, yes.
Yes.
Somebody like to make a nomination for Gail.
I nominate, this is Gail, again, I nominate Eldred French.
Crystal has been nominated for clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Eldred French. Any other nominations? I'm going to direct clerk to cast one vote. For Crystal, I'm sorry, I didn't get.
Question.
Thank you. Treasurer, hard to see him. Andrew Caning, nominations for treasurer, yes.
Just introducing myself, Denise Patch. I'm second.
Hi. Are there nominations for treasurer?
I would nominate Denise Patch.
Second.
The nominee in second, Denise Patch, being treasurer.
Patch. Patch.
Patch. Any other nominations? Clerk, pass one ballot, Denise Patch, the position of treasurer. Article two, to authorize the board of school directors to borrow money pending receipt of payment from district towns by the issuance of notes or orders payable not later than one year from date. Any discussion on article two?
Gail Fowler, I move, so move.
If I hear a second. I don't think any of that. Okay, thanks, Dave. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? The ayes have it. Article three, to present by the board of school directors their estimate of the expenses for the ensuing year. This is a public informational hearing regarding the budget article. We're not legislating anything, as you all know, like used to. Quick editorial, thank you all for being here. And it is, it's always been mystifying for me personally, and it was back when town meeting actually was a legislative body, how when you get to the school budget, which is by far the biggest sum of money that is going to be spent, there are so few participants from the public in either gaining information or talking about it, and that's unfortunate. But thank you who are here for being here. So at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Superintendent Brian Hill.
Very much. Does anybody want a copy of the warning to have numbers in front of them, because I'm going to be changing slides, so.
Can you recheck?
That will make me feel better for George, thank you.
So I'll echo what Eldred said, it's great to see folks here. We always appreciate questions, we always appreciate the opportunity to explain the work that we've done and the thought that we've put into it. The board as a whole, and the finance committee especially, we really start this work in August, and we've been working pretty diligently since August to try and figure out where we are today, to present to you, to ask you to come and vote. We are not going to tell you how to vote, but we do ask that you come out and vote. We want you to make an informed decision and vote the way you feel you should vote, but we want you to have the best information you can to make that decision. So one thing I want to start with is our district tax rate, and actually, our business manager just gave me an update that Governor Scott signed H-850 into law today. So if you've been following the news, I'm going to give you an updated number in just a second here. Based on the December 1st Tax Commissioner's letter, which we get, it's in statute that that's delivered around December 1st so that we can wrap up our planning, based on the December 6, December 1st letter, our tax rate was projected to be up 0.07%. So the district tax rate, that's before the common level of appraisal is calculated, the district tax rate was projected to go from $136.48 up to $136.58. So all of the planning that we had done, August, September, October, November, was to get to that very small increase. We've worked hard in district over the last several years to really look at, what do we need? Let's start with what we need, and let's build up from there. So instead of the mentality of, well, we have this, so let's keep all of this, and then let's add to it, we really, two years ago, rolled all the way back to, what do we need? Okay, we've got this many kids in a classroom, you need a teacher. We have students who receive special ed services, so we need that. Transportation, we need that. We built back from the ground up. So two years ago, we did that, this past year, when we went back and we met with principals and we met with department heads, we had very few increases that folks were even asking for. I think, I think people in our schools understand that there's a struggle when taxes keep going up. The good news that the governor has signed H-850 this afternoon is that actually our district tax rate is now projected to be down at least 3.24%. I say at least because part of that has to do with other districts and what they're going to decide to do with the language and the flexibility that H-850 gives them. So part of the problem this budget season has been that there are some districts who have huge percentage increases, for whatever reason. Different districts probably have different reasons, but because of that, across the state, the way our, the way education funding works, when there are large increases across the state, the whole system has to balance to fund that. So H-850 gives some districts the opportunity to go back to the drawing board, to take things out of their budget, to make cuts, if they choose to make cuts, to warn their budget and vote on it later. We had a really interesting piece of legislation, Act 127, which reweighted students across the state. We were a district that was somewhat advantaged by that. So with our planning, knowing that we were a somewhat advantaged district, we could plan really well to have a basically flat district tax rate. We knew that. Well, as things were playing out with Act 127 across the state, there were other districts who were disadvantaged. Those districts did not necessarily make the cuts that would have lined up with being disadvantaged, and that's where part of the problem comes in with the ed fund rebalancing across the state. So we planned to try and keep district tax rate flat. With other districts potentially revisiting their budgets, and with a protection that was going to be put in place being taken away from those districts, we're pretty confident that our tax rate will be down 3.24%. If other districts make larger cuts, that will look better. And that's, that's information that the, you know, the Joint Fiscal Office is putting out information, we're getting information from the Agency of Education Finance person. Actually, they were the one that said this last projection is, is, we can be pretty confident that this is worst case scenario, that it's only going to get better from here. So we're pleased with that, and that's late breaking news as of today. So our overall district budget, to get to that hopefully flat tax rate across the district, actually looking a little better with that new law signed, we, we worked hard to keep our district spending overall at a 7.6% increase. So there are some crazy numbers when you start saying, well, 7.6, that sounds like a lot. Healthcare was up 16.5%. Inflation is impacting, you know, everything we do from fuel oil to buying computers to buying paper. Personnel costs are going up every year, too. So we were, we were pretty happy that we could keep our overall spending at 7.6%. Across the state, the average spending is projected to be up 12%. So when we look at that, we go, wow, if we were able to keep things down at 7%, and across the state, we're looking at a 12% increase, that's a sign that we're trying to do what we can to contain costs. Per pupil spending is only up 5.68% from last year. So while our overall spending is up, our per pupil spending is not up as high. That's because we're an advantaged district from Act 127. So the shifting pupil weights were designed to help us out a little bit. It was designed to help some districts out a lot, and then some districts who have a lot, those were the folks that were disadvantaged. So even though our spending is up, our per pupil spending is not quite as high because we are advantaged under Act 127. So we have more students that they are funding with more dollars than regular students. According to the Tax Commissioner's letter again, from December 1st, state per pupil spending is projected to be up 12.8%. So again, we look at that and we go, wow, if the rest of the state on average is 12%, that means there are going to be people above that and people below that. If we're at 5.6%, then we must be doing a reasonable job to try and contain our costs and our spending. I talked a little bit about budget development to start this up, but here are some specifics. The things we can control, we have, you know, when we look at, when we look at how many teachers do we have for a certain number of students? So when we look at class size, we can control that. When we look at how many computers do we want to buy, we can control that. So there's a fair number of things that are within our control. Those things are really only about 20% of our budget. 80% is made up of personnel costs. So when we look at trying to cut small things, we're really only cutting from a tiny sliver of the budget. So if we're going to cut large pieces of our budget, we always have to start looking at people. There are a lot of things we can't control, though. Healthcare, like I said, went up 16.5% this year. Last year, Stan, what was healthcare? Was it about 12% was the increase last year? So we've seen two years in a row, you know, where last year we went 12% healthcare costs? That's crazy, we're never going to see that again, and then this year was 16%. Inflation, you know, we have very little control over inflation, just like folks at home are feeling the cost of groceries, when we go to the store, we're feeling that cost too here. Special education funding shift was a big one that several years ago, we used to have a reimbursement model for special education, where if a student needed services, we would, we would reach out to the state and they would reimburse something like about 70% of those costs. Several years back, through, through some other legislation, that was shifted from a reimbursement model to a block grant model. So the block grant gave us not as much funding as in a regular year we would be getting through reimbursement. So all of a sudden, we had to move some of our special education costs into our local budget. Stan, I don't remember that number off the top of my head, about how, how many dollars do we look at?
I want to say in a single year, it becomes a cumulative thing.
Yep.
Probably in a single year, it's probably around, you know, currently probably around $400,000 to $500,000 that we have to shift, that would have been reimbursed by special ed into, into the ed fund.
Okay. Thank you for that, Stan. So if you think about $500,000, and you think about that being roughly five cents on the tax rate, so the state shifting their special ed funding model can impact our taxes locally, five cents on that district tax rate, and we did nothing. That was just something that was a shift that came our way, and we had to, we had to make it work. So that's been a challenge. Other district spending, I was talking about that a little bit, but if you have districts across the state, you know, you look at that average of 12.8 per pupil and 12% for district spending across the state, when everybody spends more, the way the ed fund calculation works, everybody's district tax rate goes up a little to make up that difference, which can be a challenge. There's, there's a very interesting incentive in place to not cut your budget, because if you cut your budget and nobody else does, guess what you're doing next year? Your tax rate's going up because everybody else's is going up as well, and we're all paying into the ed fund. This year, we saw that way more painfully than ever because the state put a cap in place to protect some districts that were very disadvantaged through Act 127. So we saw that same small problem that we always see in a huge way this year. That cap was removed through H-850, which is helpful for us. Common level of appraisal has been a really big challenge the last few years. It's been a huge challenge in Tinmouth especially. Tinmouth saw about a 20% tax rate increase last year, and the bulk of that 20%, almost all of that 20% came from CLA, not from the district rate. So when we looked at our other towns that didn't have that much applied, taxes looked reasonably good for, for other communities, but Tinmouth got hit hard last year. This year is another hard year for Tinmouth where we, it was projected to be about 30% before H-850 was signed. Our other towns were looking at about a 10, 11, 12% increase. Gail?
I can assure you that Tinmouth's reappraisal is going to be done for this year, so our CLA will be 1, it won't be 0.6.
Okay. That's great news to hear for Tinmouth. That's fantastic. The projections we get don't necessarily take that into account. So other towns, we're looking at about a 10, 11, 12%. With H-850 being signed, we're looking at, you know, drop that 3.24%. We're looking at actually more like a 7, 8, 9% increase that, so that's how much H-850 is helping us. CLA is really challenging because that's something that, while we work hard to set our district tax rate flat, different communities can have different tax rates because of the recent sales in those communities, and that's, that's a very challenging thing for us to plan for. This year, we didn't actually have CLA numbers until maybe a week into January. So we are well on our way of having a budget set and trying to do everything we can to be responsible, then we get those CLA numbers in. We were, we were blown away when we saw the 30% Tinmouth number, so I'm glad to hear that that might work out better.
Property and wood is worth more.
Which, which is great, but that doesn't help you pay your taxes this year. I, I know that. So we have worked hard in the past, we've made a lot of cuts in district, we really have. I think I've got a good number, oh, I didn't mention this, but that 4.67%, since 2017, we've had a per pupil spending on average that's increased 4.67%. So for a lot of years, we've worked hard to budget the same way that we're looking at budgeting this year. In the past, we've made a lot of cuts. So you talk about declining enrollment, we have made a lot of cuts to keep up with that. When you look at our average class sizes across the district, we have about 15 students in a class. We actually have some elementary classes that have 22, 23 per class. So we, we're not running a lot of really small classes. For a period of time, our class sizes got a little smaller, then we'd make cuts, then class sizes would get smaller, then we'd make cuts. So we're at a place where it's really hard to identify more places to cut because of how much has been cut probably over the last decade or so. This year, we did hold some public forums, and we made some small cuts where we could. We did make some small additions. There were some staffing pieces that we have had in place through grant funding that we've asked to keep in place. Those additions totaled up to less than four cents added to the district tax rate. Just for context, four cents added to the district tax rate is about $100 on a $250,000 property. So if that's your property, that would be about $100 shift in your tax bill, if that makes sense. That four cents, you'll, you'll see that that 3%, that 3% there is about four cents. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of what that actually means. Some of the additions that we made were absolutely based on community feedback. One thing we heard a lot from folks was they wanted to see a foreign language program back in our elementary schools. So that was probably our largest addition, actually, was adding one foreign language We're in a really interesting place where we have a reasonable amount of surplus in district, and unfortunately, over the last couple of years, we had been using surplus to keep the tax rate low. Part of the reason we're in a challenge as a state, and we're looking at 18 or 20% property tax increases, is because last year, the state used a large surplus to pay everybody's tax rate down. This year, there's no large surplus to pay everybody's tax rate down. So we've had a lot of conversations at the board level and the finance committee where we don't want to do that to our communities. We don't want to use a bunch of surplus money to artificially lower the tax rate, you know, let's say for three years, and then all of a sudden, there's nothing left and taxes jump 15, 20 cents. So we've worked hard to come up with a plan where we can phase out how we use surplus, and maybe the tax rate goes up three cents, three cents, three cents, not waiting three years and it jumps up 15. So this year, we're using a little bit lower surplus number to get our tax rate where it is, and for the next five or so years, we would plan the same strategy. We've also tried really hard not to bring a bond to the community to fund our facilities. So as we stop using our surplus to pay taxes down, we're going to start putting a little more surplus in our building fund. That keeps us from having to go to the community with a multimillion dollar bond, because we definitely don't want to do that. But it helps us take care of our aging buildings, which they absolutely are aging, and they're in need of maintenance, like most of the schools across the state. So our goal, could we have had the tax rate a couple pennies lower? Absolutely. But instead of coming to the community for a multimillion dollar bond, we're going to use those couple of pennies that we could have brought the tax rate down, and we're asking on the ballot to put that surplus into our building fund. In the past, we had done $200,000 into our building fund for a while. Last year, we had the conversation that we needed to do better and take care of our buildings, so we increased that to 250. This year, we've talked about raising that to 300. So as we phase out taxes, as we phase out surplus to lower the tax rate, we're also trying to pledge more surplus towards our building funds. The goal is that we're planning in a way that is a little more regular. We're not going to come to you any one year and ask for a lot. We're going to try and keep things as stable as possible. If we could keep taxes from going up, period, we would, but we can't. So our goal has been, how do we keep things stable? How do we keep fluctuations from happening? I know, my wife and I, we budget, and we know we need to save a certain amount every year to pay our taxes. And when we started hearing about all these crazy increases, we said, okay, let's budget 10% more, just in case. Those fluctuations, I think, are hard. Nobody, so our, our goal has been, how do we, how do we cut down on the uncertainty and the last minute crazy things that can happen, if that makes sense? Okay, that was a lot. Questions? And I'll let our moderator.
Any questions? Dave?
Number one, how is enrollment now compared, and attendance, compared to pre-COVID?
Yeah, enrollment has rebounded a little bit, you'll see that, that's in our annual report. It hasn't come all the way back, but it's rebounded. I think part of the challenge with enrollment, we have these conversations a lot around, well, what can we do to get students to come here? And we do things to get students to come here. You know, we have a lot of Middletown tuition students that bring dollars into the district. So we spend some time trying to cultivate a relationship with Middletown, and our principal went down to Middletown last year to meet with sixth graders. We bring Middletown kids up here, but having somebody go to the school, I think, why not do both? So we're very mindful of, we need to bring kids into the district. But enrollment's declining across the state, so the challenge is, we can bring more kids in, but next year, there are fewer kids. And we can bring more in, but next year, there are fewer kids. So when we talk about, you know, Middletown might have 12 kids and we want to bring 10 in, great, if we do that. But if they've got 10 and we bring eight, they've got eight and we bring six, we can't change that there's declining enrollment across the state, and actually, across a lot of the country, folks are seeing the same trend. So enrollment, we, we've rebounded, but I don't think we're ever going to get our numbers back where they were, because there's, we can pull as many kids from everywhere else as we can, but there are fewer kids from everywhere else to pull, if that makes sense.
How's attendance?
Attendance is challenging. You may be seeing a lot of national news about attendance, because post-COVID, attendance hit a slump, and then a lot of the things we're looking at coming out of COVID, behavior increased coming out of COVID, but behavior settled down. Some mental health pieces and some academic pieces were really challenging coming out of COVID. We've made progress. Attendance, a lot of places are not seeing progress, they're actually seeing it get worse, which is really interesting. So that's, I think, the latest conversation we've been having in district is around attendance, surprisingly not getting better, actually getting worse in a lot of, in a lot of areas.
So what's the plan, is there a plan to try to address that?
Yeah, great question, Dave. One of the, I was talking about retaining some positions. There is one position in this budget that's an addition that had been grant funded coming out of COVID, and that's a homeschool liaison. So that's somebody who is working specifically to try and address that attendance issue. So when we're, when we're staffed, the way we've been staffed for years, and a student is out, they get a phone call. But we know we need to do better than just a phone call, so having a dedicated person who cannot just make the phone call, but when the student is back two days later, can meet with a student and try and, and help them get caught back up in their classes, that's, that's important. So that's one grant funded position out of the handful that we've had in place that we said, we need to keep this. We worked hard to use our grant funding coming out of COVID in a way that we didn't hire 30 people, and then, oh no, what are we going to do with these 30 people? We tried to be a little more strategic about using that funding. This is the one grant funded position that we want to keep, to address attendance.
The other question I had was, and you alluded a little to it, was about deferred maintenance.
Yeah.
And so you didn't really specifically talk about anything that's defective in our district, but.
Absolutely.
If you could elaborate a little on that.
I can definitely give you some ideas on that. There are some. I can definitely give you some ideas on that. There are some medium-sized projects that I think are becoming problematic. So when you, when you go outside of, outside of classrooms or spaces where the public would normally interact in, when you go into the boiler room, places like that, you'll find plumbing that is old and maybe going to fail in five years, that never sees the light of day. But our maintenance folks absolutely know those problems are there. So, you know, like in the high school here, we've got a plumbing project that we've been talking about, that's maybe about a $20, $25,000 project. Because if that plumbing were to fail, we'd be looking at a flooded building, and that would be way more money. So projects that are probably about 20 to $50,000 projects. Shrewsbury, the gym space, the heater there is probably, it's probably the original heater that was in there. That needs to be replaced because it's starting to fail. The rest of the building has a more updated system, but the gym system is failing. So things like that. We've got some, this is newer carpeting in here, but Wallingford, we've got some really old carpet in there that needs to come up. That's becoming a, I think, a health problem. Summers here are a little hotter and a little more humid than they ever were. So a lot of our buildings are seeing some challenges over the summer with moisture. So getting those carpets up in Wallingford and redoing the floor there might be a $30,000 project, something like that. So we don't necessarily have anything that's a $200,000 project, and the roof is about to cave in, but we have a lot of little things that we haven't really got to over the last handful of years.
There's also the unexpected. Like, we just had to repair some of the basketball hoops in the main gym here, which we use constantly, all the time, even through gym classes and stuff. We were made aware that the ones that were...
And that was a $19,000 project.
That was a 19, that was unexpected. It was just brought to us where we had to help re-safety the ones that are up, that only get pulled down for gym class. The bleachers in the middle school gym, these gym, the buildings are used all the time. We were just aware that those bleachers are not quite so safe and are going to have to be addressed. So it's some of the unexpected as the year goes on. It's not just where we're looking at, okay, a budget passing, but we have, I mean, we have a to-do list. But it's throughout the year, we get things too, that our buildings and grounds, you know, they tell us about that need to be addressed too. So we're looking at things like that, too.
And to give you numbers, we looked at a five-year Buildings and Grounds Plan. And we put all those medium projects on the table to say, okay, when can we do them and spread them out over five years, and let's look at the cost? The cost was twice what we actually had in surplus. And the cost was creeping up towards $2 million. It was a lot of projects put together, but that gives you an idea that how many of those $50,000 projects to get to 2 million, you know? It was a fair number.
That five-year plan, I mean, I think we, we look at it frequent.
Yep.
It's not just every year we look at it. We look at it often to readjust, figure out what we need to do to keep our buildings going and safe for our students.
Great questions, Dave. Thank you.
May I ask a follow-up on the attendance question? Do you guys have a sense, or can you talk about what types of issues you're seeing around attendance? Is it health-related? Is it mental health-related? Is it motivation? I don't know.
Yeah, I, you know, I think, I think I would say it's, it's a little of all three of those. I think it's not as much health-related, but I think sometimes we do have, coming out of COVID, if you've got a cough, if you've got a fever, we're asking people to stay home more, where that was really always the policy, but it wasn't anything anybody ever, you know, a kid could maybe make it through the day and have a fever, and nobody stressed about it too much. But now, if you're not feeling well, we're going to take your temperature. We're going to call home, and you, you might stay out longer. So I think some of it is health-related. And it's not that health has become poorer, but I think it's because we're being a little stricter about those requirements. I do think the last two years, we've had rougher, rougher flu seasons, you know? So while we were wearing masks for how long, and we weren't exposed to other things, you know, we've seen a little bit of that play out the last two years. I do think we do have a lot of chronic absence that are the mental health, the social, emotional ones, where, you know, motivation, students just don't want to get out of bed in the morning. So we definitely do see that. Lynn?
Yeah, just to add to that, I'm on the continuous improvement plan here at the high school, on that committee. And it came up, there was some serious issues around attendance. And so that's one of the things that the committee has put on the front burner, is how can we address those things to make sure, because it's not simple. It's not one thing or another thing. It's, it's multiple issues. And so, you know, I just want to say that the high school, and I can only speak to the high school because I'm on that committee, but they are looking at the issues surrounding attendance and hoping, and planning on making it better. So I just want to let you know that.
Good question.
Good evening. George Ambrose, Clarendon, pleased to be here this evening. Earlier this evening, I received a call from one of our citizens in Clarendon about the act that was just passed into law. I also know that somebody on this board received information from the same person. And her concern was to make sure that we address the question of delaying or not delaying the budget vote. And listening to what you have to say, it seems to me that you feel that you've done anything you possibly could do in terms of any reductions. So I think it would be important for you to address the need or not of that delayed vote.
Yeah.
In terms of not only this district, but would our delay encourage other people to do something?
No, great question, George. And I appreciate you bringing that up, even though we touched on some of that. You know, what I said was, we worked in a way that we, we were never doing anything that I think anybody would say is extravagant. You know, talking about retaining a support staff position to address attendance, you know? The, the challenges we're seeing in other districts are $5 million facilities project. You know, we're not looking at anything at all like that, that we've put into our budget. So we don't see a need to go, hey, let's pause, let's revisit, let's redo things, let's take that back out. Because we just don't have those additions in there to begin with. And we don't have, we don't have a budget that has a lot of extras anyway. So we definitely had the conversation starting back in October around, what would it look like if we made cuts? And we even said at the time, looking at the projections, we said, how would we get to a flat tax rate? And we ballparked about 10 cents in the tax rate to get flat. And we said 10 cents would be about $1 million in cuts. And we looked at that. And when we looked at that, we went, holy cow, that's a lot. You know, that's losing, if you, if you, how many administrators? Did we say one or two administrators? I don't remember.
It depended upon the position.
Okay.
But at least...
At least one, maybe two administrators, three high school teachers, three elementary teachers, and four paraeducators. That's what it would look like to cut $1 million, because, like I was saying earlier, that 20%, where we can't cut our oil, you know, because we got to heat our buildings. We can't cut our paper, because then we'd be out of paper. You know, that 20% of non-personnel is really hard to cut $1 million out of. So we really have to look at personnel if we're trying to cut $1 million. So we looked at that, and we did not see places where we could really cut and not be harming our program, and not be doing a disservice to students. So because there weren't great places to cut, and because we didn't put huge additions, we don't know what we could do if we paused the budget and we went back and we looked. I think the board, the board was pretty all on the same page that we can't do that to our schools. If we tried to cut that much, we would be hamstringing our schools. So some of those other questions, would, would other districts be doing this work? There are some districts that are looking at tax increases, district rate, not even talking about CLA, of the 30s and 40%. So those, those districts are going to their communities saying, wow, you know, is that $5 million project that we added into the budget worth a 30% tax increase? I think they have a really good reason to pause, go back to the drawing board, redo that, because I think that's a really hard position to be in. So I think there are definitely going to be some districts that do that. Whether or not, if we did that, would that encourage others around us to do that? I don't think so. The Rutland County, we tend to be about all in the same boat, metaphorically, that we were somewhat advantaged by Act 127. So we were, we were told that we would have an easier budget season because we were advantaged, that we wouldn't have to make huge cuts because the bill was designed to help us a little. So most of Rutland County is in about that same position, where they didn't add anything huge, they tried to budget reasonably. And I think if we paused our, our budget, and we went back to the drawing board, I don't think our neighbors would. They wouldn't, they would, they'd keep doing what they're doing, I think. Did I get all those questions, George?
I think you did pretty good. And congratulations on that.
Yeah. And, you know, the last thing I'll say, George, is, and we've said this before, if our communities vote the budget down, we'll know. We need to go back and we need to redo it. If we went back and we redid it, we'd be wasting money, because we'd be reprinting and we'd be, you know, so we'll let our voters tell us if they support it or not. And if we need to, you know, we'll, we'll have to if we need to. We will.
Fair enough.
Sure.
Yes. A couple of, I guess, points of interest. Number one, the COVID did a lot of interesting things to property values, as many of you know. And in Clarendon, we finished a reappraisal here, not too many years ago, and we were, received a letter from the state, we have to do it again.
Oh, geez, yeah.
And normally, it's been done in Clarendon every 10 years, which allows us time to build up money to do it. And at this point, the other problem that we're going to run into is that people that can do the reappraisal are short supply.
Because everybody's having to do them, yeah.
It's going to be a while before we can get to it. So the amount of adjustment is going to go down or up, depending on which direction, and that'll play havoc with tax rates.
Yep.
I was encouraged in some of the news that I was listening to this evening, that there are some of our legislators that have recognized that they need to look at the entire picture of education.
Not just a Band-Aid.
The Act 850 that was just signed is another, in my opinion, Band-Aid approach to a problem that is statewide. And for folks to get around the notion of it's a statewide funding system versus a local funding, you know, you like to think, well, in my school, I can control the spending, and we're going to pay the taxes, but that's no longer true. So that's another issue that folks struggle with, I'm sure. But the major question is, the way we're doing business is not sustainable in our state. And people have to come to figure out how to alternate that. Just recently, I've started a notion through some discussions at our Clarendon Board of, let's see how people feel about some kind of consolidation of school efforts. And there's all kinds of ways of looking at it. You can think about elementary school. You can think about high school consolidation. You can think about number of hours in a day that you're, you're doing business to help the notion of saving money. There's only, excuse me, the easiest way to save money in our state is you got to reduce building expense, and you got to reduce staff expense, period. And how do you do that? That's what needs to be talked about and dealt with, simply as that. Anyways, I'll get off the soapbox.
And, and George...
Although it's a little slippery up here, because it is soap.
And, and George, I think, I feel fairly confident in speaking for my colleagues across Rutland County, we're more than willing. We need the state to support that work. You know, that, that's, I think, the challenge. Consolidation, in, in our towns, if we were to consolidate elementary schools, we would need all our towns to vote to tell us to consolidate. And if they told us that, we'd listen and we'd make it work. I think it, it gets even harder when you think about high schools across Rutland County. If we were told to do that, we'd figure it out. But I, I think it's, it's hard to imagine everybody in Rutland County coming together and negotiating that and doing that of their own volition. I think it's tricky. Yeah.
That was perfect, George. So thank you. Stephanie Moser, Clarendon. And I appreciate the approach that you took to creating this budget, working from the ground up, like you said, and really trying to look at what is needed and, and how you can hold that steady. So I greatly appreciate that explanation. I think my concern is the 80% that we can't control. And I sort of think the same thing as George does, like, how, how are we going to manage this? We have been, I've been following this for years. This, and it's never going to change, just as if it does, just as other organizations, their highest expense is their employees and their insurance. But what can be done? You know, we're in a, we're in a point, we're at a point where we need to make some significant changes across the state of Vermont. And so I'm curious, are there efforts that the board, the school staff can play in affecting that change?
You know, I think the best thing, Stephanie, is contacting your local representatives. I think this year, more than ever, they've actually heard from folks, which I think is great. I read an editorial yesterday, maybe today, that somebody said, vote your school budgets down. That'll send them a message. It was like, who? I, I think the more that we are actually calling up, writing our representatives all the time, I think that's how they get the message. You know, if our budget goes down, we go back to the drawing board, we figure out a bad way to fix it, and we fix it, and we get a budget to pass. But that doesn't really affect change in Montpelier. If half the budgets in the state go down, Montpelier might start paying attention. But they might not do anything for a year, or two, or three, you know? I think, and our board members have been good about this this year, saying, we need to start reaching out. Like, I think even in October, we were talking about, we need to be calling up, we need to be advocating.
And I think most of us on, at least this board, have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've been sending them a lot of messages.
I think part of, part of the tricky thing, Stephanie, is some folks don't even understand necessarily who to go to about the problem. You know, for a long time, people have come to us, and we go, well, we're trying. We're doing what we can. The state tells us how much we get per student, and, and we'll try and do a reasonable budget based on that. And we only have so much we can do. And then we try to advocate any way we can advocate. But sometimes, when the legislators hear from us, it's not nearly as powerful as when they hear from all of you. You know, we have some folks who, I think, for better or for worse, when you talk to five superintendents in the county, okay. But if you talk to 100 constituents in the county, I think there, there's definitely power in numbers, you know? We're a democracy. Five people in the county advocating for something doesn't go very far. So I, I know that's not a great answer. I know it's not. But I really think if we're going to have things change on a larger scale, we really need to have it change at the state level.
I fully agree.
If I may...
Lynn?
You know, it, it bothers me tremendously that things that were once under the control of local school boards no longer are. And I'll use the example of health insurance. Working here as a teacher, I remember negotiating with Henry Burnham, healthcare costs. And we did that here. And it didn't matter what was happening in Burlington, or Middlebury, or Bennington, or wherever. It was here. And that's gone. I mean, we have no... I mean, we have no say, as a board, in healthcare costs. And I looked it up in Vermont Digger or whatever it was. In the first year, they said, well, there'd be a 4% increase and then it should get better after that. That didn't happen. You know, and that was an agreement between the Vermont Legislature and the teachers' union. And that took away that whole idea in terms of healthcare and some other things as well, like the special ed grants.
Was another one designed to save money that didn't?
Yeah. And it, so that loss of local control, to me, I, it bothers me a lot. Now, do I have an answer? No.
You know, and I think, to build on what Len is saying, I think it's this really interesting thing where now budgets are still locally voted on. But so much of the budget is not locally controlled. So there are these things that we have to deal with and the little area we can actually exert some control, well, we're the ones getting a yes or no vote. I'll go, I'll go really far the other extreme. And I know I've told a couple of people in this room this already. If the state wants to control special ed costs and the state wants to control healthcare costs, control it all. Tell us what we get and we'll spend it the best we can. But this really untransparent situation where they control some of it, but not all of it, but then we have to put it out for a vote and then we have to deal with the aftermath if it's a no vote, I just don't think it works. We spend a lot of time and effort. We have a lot of conversations and we try to engage folks. But in the end, it's a really messy thing. And if you told us, you got this much per student, we'd go and we'd spend it and we'd do the best we could. And we'd save a lot of time and effort that we could focus on kids that, right now, we don't. So it's tricky.
So does anybody here, or if you know of other people outside of the group, you know, have an answer of how do you change what we got? And I know I sponsored, as one of probably a couple dozen or more people in the legislature sponsored, the effort to try to move the funding from the property tax to the income tax. There's no easy way. The cost is still there. And, you know, bottom line, we all want to see our children educated. It's so important. It's maybe one of the most important things we do as a parent. And you, as a school board, have to find a way to, if it doesn't pass, you have to find a way to get it to pass. If you want your kids educated, it's gotta be done. And I think most Vermonters have that sense. And that's why this thing gets sort of kicked down the road without really major change. But if anybody has an idea for major change of how to fund education other than property tax, you know, let, tell your representative. I'd like to hear you tell me right now. I don't, I've never heard the answer that you can sell to the Vermont Legislature. It won't, they won't move off the dime on property. I mean, there's reasons. You can argue why it's good to have it on property, but there's a lot of reasons not to as well.
Yeah.
It's a difficult, difficult topic. I don't have to tell you that.
Gail.
So I'm not quite sure how to present this. It sounds like our tax rate is not going up, but the media is telling everybody that your taxes are going up 18%. So if somebody goes to the ballot box and they're thinking, hey, my taxes are gonna go up 18% if I say yes here, how do you?
And we can do everything we can to try and communicate, but once that headline's out there, 18%, 20%, you know, yeah. Because ours isn't going up that much. Maybe it was projected to go up that much in Tinmouth, but it's definitely not going up that much in Clarendon or Shrewsbury or Wallingford. And after H850, it's not going up that much even. That's really tricky because I think unfortunately, there were some politics in play when some of those announcements started coming out, you know. The December 1st letter that I kept referring to, we get that information because we need that information to plan and finalize our budgets. That December 1st letter wasn't even cold off the press when notes started coming out from folks in office about, oh my gosh, these increases are unheard of and we can't let this happen. We hadn't even read the whole letter when those headlines were coming out, which is challenging. And I think that's unfortunately, you know, if folks wanted us to do better, that was a conversation we could have had last spring. We were planning, we were planning all, you know, Stan and I were reading the new language of Act 127, trying to interpret what it meant in this 5% cap and what does that mean and the circumstances where that would come into play. And from last spring to December, we kept hearing, well, the legislature doesn't know how they're gonna fund it yet. They're gonna figure it out. That 5% cap, what happens with spending over that? Well, they still have to figure that out. We had the experts in the field telling us, you know, we're not sure yet. If they knew that they were just gonna spread it out and everybody's taxes were gonna go up, tell us. We would have done something differently, you know. And that's where I worry that if folks aren't all working together and sharing information, then we can't do better if we're, if we're not sure of all the information. And I think that's frustrating. So the timing of that, I think, is really challenging. And I think it's hard from December to now to change that narrative. You know, our taxes don't look that bad here. But gosh, you're right, Gail. Everybody's gonna go to the ballot box and probably remember headlines more than, you know, from porch forum posts I make. And that's tricky. That's really tricky. There are, I think, some folks in the state who want us to be frustrated with our schools. And I think that's a challenging place to be because we're working really hard. But we have a lot of people who are frustrated with us, even though we're working really hard. I don't know. I think that's maybe one path to a solution. If people get frustrated enough, then maybe they'll be willing to accept a change in a certain direction. I'd like to be in on the conversation and help with the change rather than just rile people up, you know, push for that change.
So I think, sorry. Bottom line is, everybody who has attended this meeting, please spread the word because we have, spread that. H, you know, our taxes are not going up 30%. We have worked very hard to make sure that the money that we are spending is to provide education for our students. We have always run into the issue of some community members listen and are very knowledgeable and very educated on everything that's out there in the legislature. And then you always have the ones that aren't. We all, and we have committees, you know, community engagement committee is to help get to the community to come talk to us, to get the education of what we're doing, not just, oh, I heard this, or I saw this headline, or I heard this from the legislature. We work really hard on trying to have all of our five, five districts, sorry, it's super late. It's been a long day. Five districts hear what we're doing or know that they can come to us and ask us questions. We're not, you know, just a two-month meeting or two meetings a month and whatever our committees are, five or six times a month, whatever. And that's, I think, the bottom line is, not everybody is here. You know, we obviously can't have five community, you know, five towns here for an annual meeting. But we just ask that the, who is educated now on what's happening, please like spread the word so they're not getting to vote and going, oh, no, that's an 18% increase. No. When really, honestly, it, really it's not. We have worked very hard to not have it that way. So-
And if you look at the spending per pupil, 13,000 per pupil, actually is a really good-looking number compared to what we've been talking about lately.
What we've had in the past.
You know. So what an interesting thing that we have these headlines of 20% increase in your property taxes, but actually your per pupil spending in a lot of places looks a lot more reasonable than it ever has.
Yeah, so we just ask. We need the community and we need the parents and the graduated students that have come back to work at our districts to communicate with us. And, you know, our annual meeting is to communicate and understand what we've been working on all year to try to make for our schools to run properly and for our education to follow through.
Love that Peg TV is here for us tonight because we don't always get Peg TV on our annual meeting.
Exactly.
Encourage folks to watch because it'll be posted. But yeah, I mean, that's a really good point, Gail. The news that's out there seems to be in conflict with what we're actually telling you tonight.
Carol.
Are there any plans for you guys to attend the town meeting night before the vote at all? I know, you know, the school-
If we can be there, we will be there.
Well, I just, you know, I mean-
The town informational meetings?
Yeah, the night before. Because in the old days, the school board would present. It was always a big, you know, conflict, who goes first, the school board or the town. Had to be scheduled, so the superintendent had to make it to all of them, but-
My understanding is there's no space on those meeting agendas for folks to actually present.
But there's public input. There should be a public input. And maybe you could just reiterate what you're saying tonight to us, all, you know, dozen of us, when the other dozen people show up at the other meeting.
The way, the way that we've done in Shrewsbury in the past, ever since they bifurcated the meetings, and the school people would come to the town meeting and ask if it might be all right, if they were there to answer. And a portion of the meeting would simply be set aside for them. It's really, since it's an informational meeting, it's at the discretion of the moderator.
Right. I believe they do, though. One of the items would be to elect a representative, to, a Clarendon representative. I think that goes on that particular, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So that would be a time where-
That makes it germane, at least, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think this should be a problem.
Well, anyway, I just thought, as you were saying, or as Andrew was saying, to, you know, to get the word out, that's a few more people who might hear it.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Questions? George?
Yes, thank you. I don't mean to monopolize time, but I just thought I'd point out that I'm currently working here on an effort to talk about the issue of consolidation. I've contacted the select boards of the other three towns from Clarendon, which would be Timoth, Shrewsbury, and Wallingford. I've heard from Wallingford and Timoth in terms of their willingness to participate in generating a questionnaire talking about this subject. And what I anticipate doing is, after we get done with this election process, is to see if I can get a group of folks from each of the towns to talk about it. And the intent is to see what public opinion is about the topic and also the information would be passed on to legislators and anybody else to generate interest in the fact that the state needs to look at education as a whole piece. So that's where I'm, what I'm doing now. When I'm disappointed at this point, I haven't heard from Shrewsbury. I contacted the town clerk just this morning and her response was that they brought it up in their last meeting but didn't seem to be much interest in anything happening. So I'll just pass that along.
Take that under advisement. Thank you.
Our guys on the ball here.
Gail.
Forgive me if I'm a little, seem a little unintelligent here, but we're spending $21 million, right? And we have around 700 students. So if you divide that 21 million by 700, you'll get 13,000.
No, absolutely, Gail. So every, when I say that our district was slightly advantaged by Act 127, that's the difference. So Act 127 was designed to send more funding to schools that had more need. So the disadvantaged districts would be districts where, say, they have 700 actual students and the state says, okay, we're gonna wait your students and now you have 700. So districts that have very high need, they say you have 700 students, but looking at the profiles of your students, we're gonna wait them and now you have 1,400 students. So we're not on the far end of the spectrum, but we were advantaged in a way that we get more funding from the state. Does that make sense? Sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say, does it make sense? Is that explanation clear?
I guess. I'm just confused about the, how much taxes we have to raise to get that 21 million compared to the number of students that we have.
Yeah. So the tax, the tax, what's the word? Capacity. The tax capacity of our communities grew. So we could fund more raising less, actually. Does that, is that clear? So locally, and Stan, jump in if there's a better way to say this.
Well, based on this year's budget, we would need a little over $16.9 million from the education fund to support this budget. And, you know, based on towns and where they land in regards to the education fund, our district as a whole, you know, putting all the four towns together, we would probably raise ourselves maybe a little more than half that in taxes. And the rest would come from the Ed Fund, which would be from the other, I, you know, considered wealthier towns, so to speak, would be funding the rest of our budget.
Okay.
So we don't actually raise, we don't actually raise directly 16.9 million. We probably raise anywhere between eight and nine million in funds from the towns directly. The rest would come from the Ed Fund, which would be from the wealthier towns.
And Stan, is it accurate to say that Act 127 changed the calculation in a way that we get more for raising the same amount locally?
It did change the calculation. It gave us equity in regards to the rest of the state in regards, you know, our, under the old formula, our ADM number was, our equalized pupil number was constantly going down. And costs were going up. So it was becoming a burden, it would become more and more of a burden on us to support the same programs that we had currently going in our district. So Act 127, you know, the purpose behind that was to make things more equitable for districts like ours, that we would be able to afford the education and also give our students the same opportunities that other students might have in a wealthier district. So hence, you know, when they come up with a waiting formula for students, you know, we may have a little over 700 resident students in our district, but due to the waiting formula compared to the rest of the state, you know, that number came up to 1,311 students, which then gives us, with the rest of the state, and we're being able to, you know, provide the same services that you might get in a wealthier district, you know, to maintain the programs.
Which, which ends up being the thing that doesn't seem to make sense. How can we have modest additions in a flat district rate? We can have modest additions in a flat rate because of that additional tax capacity that 127 gave us. Because it, on paper, we have more students. I know it's, it's fun stuff that we love. We love-
In other contexts, our per pupil number, you know, last year was above the state average. This year, based on the funding formula for the weighted students, we're below the average. You know, our per pupil spending is $12,900 and the state average is a little over 14,000, I think, the numbers I saw. So we're actually below, you know, the state average on spending per pupil now with the new weighted formula.
And, and below the state average of increase for overall spending and for per pupil spending. You know, something our system is not, a couple of things. It's not simple. It's not transparent. It's not stable. And when I talk to legislators, I ask for those things. I want a simple system that's transparent and is stable. And I think if we could actually get those things, we'd be in far better shape and these meetings would be, they might make sense. Now just to be clear- meetings would be, they might make sense, not just be clear, but they might make sense. The challenge that I always hear is, you can't get those three things if you want local control still. And that's a really tricky thing that I think we need to, we need to think about, because I think a lot of folks have thrown Band-Aids on the problem, and it's become kind of Byzantine because folks want to hang on to that one local piece of it. And like Len was saying before, so many pieces of it aren't even local anymore. But if we, if we can't give that piece up, it's going to be far harder for it to ever be simple, transparent, or stable. Good questions. Good thoughts. We love hearing everybody.
Other questions on Article 3. Great, thanks. I'll read Article 4. Shall the voters the Mill River Unified Union School District approve the board to expend $21,333,576, which is the amount the school board is determined to be necessary in the ensuing fiscal year? And that, of course, will be done by Australian ballot. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $13,019,22, no, 13,019 and 22 cents per equalized pupil. Article 5. Shall the voters authorize the district to transfer current surplus funds to the Building Sinking Fund in the amount of $300,000? That will also be by Australian ballot on March 5th. The meeting will be then recessed to March 5th, 2024, for the purpose of voting by Australian ballot at the usual polling places in the district towns on the following business. Said ballots shall be brought to the Mill River Union High School cafeteria, following the closing of the polls in the district towns, where they will be commingled and counted by the officers of the district towns. That's all I have. If anybody, before we leave, has anything else to say, I'll entertain that now as well.
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say this, but.
I'll tell you.
Might be too late.
Can you call me? Did you call me?
No, I said, "I will tell you."
Oh, okay. That I am going to be a writing candidate for the Clarendon.
I actually don't think that is appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for everybody who came out tonight.
Absolutely. And if anybody wants to talk more, or if you have friends or neighbors who want to talk, we'll always make time. We'll always answer questions as best as we can.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bren, that was good. Gail?
I just want to thank the school board members and all the staff and everybody who works on this, because it's not easy.
Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you.